12, 2025, and the time is 7:35 PM. I'd like to call this meeting to order and ask you all to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, can we have the roll call?
Keefe Offer?
Here.
De Haven?
Here.
Spruill?
Here.
Dobree?
Here.
Randall?
Here.
Lewis?
Here.
Medina?
Here.
All right, do we have approval of the agenda, or do we have any amendments?
I move that we approve the agenda as presented.
Second. Motion made by Dobree and seconded by De Haven?
Lewis?
Yes.
Dobree?
Yes.
Keefe Offer?
Aye.
Randall?
Yes.
De Haven?
Yes.
Spruill?
Yes.
Medina?
Yes. All right, we're moving on to number two on our agenda, the Consent Agenda. The listing under the Consent Agenda is a group of items to be acted on with a single motion and vote. This agenda is designed to expedite the handling of limited routine matters by the City Council. Either the public or council member may request that an item may be removed from the Consent Agenda at the time prior to council's vote. I'll ask if a citizen or council member wishes to have any specific item removed from the Consent Agenda for discussion after reading the list. A, approval of meeting minutes from October 28, 2025. B, approval of the expenditure lists for November 12, 2025. C, approval of a renewal application for a fermented malt beverage and wine liquor license for Walmart Inc., DBA Walmart Store #0966, located at 1835 East Main Street Cortez. D, approval of a renewal application for a hotel and restaurant liquor license from New Hong Kong of Cortez, Inc., DBA New Hong Kong Chinese Restaurant, located at 332 East Main Street Cortez. E, approval of a renewal application for a tavern liquor license for Cortez Veterans, Inc., located at 320 North Harrison's Cortez. F, approval of a renewal application for a Brew Pub Liquor License for Four Corners Brewing LLC, DBA Main Street Brewery and Restaurant, located at 21 East Main Street Cortez. G, approval of a special event permit for the Cortez Area Chamber of Commerce Event on November 13, 2025, on the premises of Four Corners Community Bank, located at 77 West Main Street Cortez. And H, approval of a special event permit for Fundamental Needs, Inc., on December 31, 2025, located at 209 West Main Street Cortez. Would anyone like an item removed from the Consent Agenda for discussion?
Madam Mayor, I'm requesting that we remove item A until the next meeting.
Okay. A request to the approval of the meeting minutes from October 28, 2025, be removed for the following meeting.
I move that we approve the Consent Agenda with the change that Councilor Randall suggested.
Second.
All right, motion made by Dobree and seconded by Lewis?
Spruill? De Haven?
Yes.
Randall?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Keefe Offer?
Aye.
Dobree?
Yes.
Medina?
Aye.
Okay. Moving on to number three on our agenda, Public Participation. Individuals may not comment on items that are on the City Council Agenda during the public participation time. There's no limit to the number of speakers, although public comment will be held to an overall time limit of 30 minutes. Speakers have a time limit of three minutes per person, may only speak once, and may not cede time to another commenter. All right. Our first comment, I'd like to invite Ty Rogers to the podium. So just make sure the microphone's on and start with your name and address.
Test, test. Hi. Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. This evening, I am here to invite you all to an event that my organization, the Southwest Colorado Education Collaborative, is holding on December 3 at the Monizuma County Fairgrounds. It's called the Futures Fair. And we've hosted this event, this is now probably the fifth, sixth year. A few, first few years, we were at the Cortez High School. The last few years, we've expanded it out to be Monizuma and Dolores Counties. So it's a regional event, and it is from 8 to noon. And we have 50, 60 different industry partners attendin'. And we try to bring 8th through 12th grade students to the event. There'll be Mankas, Dolores, and Dove Creek School Districts in attendance this year. And they will, there'll be about 200, 300 kids coming to meet. And it's kind of an expo space, so industry partners will have tables set up, and the kids will have the opportunity to meet and learn about a myriad of different career paths. So the idea is for them to have, at a young age, career exploration opportunities, to meet people who are professionals of different fields. We try to invite as many as we can. We'd love to potentially have people who are in public service, like yourselves, in attendance. Helen West has reserved a table that she'll be able to stay at. So if, and if you have half an hour or an hour, you're welcome to come for the whole time. We could also set up an additional table. I can work with city staff, with Jason, with Helen, with Mr. Sanders and his team. And Mr. Sanders has attended in the past, and it's just a great event, trying to look at helping the students think about career pathways, businesses who are trying to highlight workforce demand. So like, some of the strong partnerships are construction trades and health sciences. But there's a lot of nuanced professions, like the PD will be there as well, nuanced professions that the city can represent. So like IT, say the county could represent with, say, like GIS, things like that, that are not typical touchpoints for kids of this age in these communities to see a large presence of these kinds of professions. So that's why opening it up to the city and all the different departments it has, as well as the county. And I talked to Mr. Anderson this morning about inviting some of them. So that's what I'm here to invite you all to. And we'll take it through the channels to make sure that you guys are, if you want to, in attendance. Any questions? I mean, I'm out of time, but...
Thank you, Ty.
Yeah.
We know where to find you. All right, do we have anyone else from the public who would like to make comment before we move on to the next agenda item? Okay, we'll move on on our agenda, number four, Presentations. 4A is a proclamation in recognition of Green Light a Vet. Thank you. All right, and apologies, we normally do this in October so that we're dedicating the month of November for our veterans. But slipped through the cracks, but we definitely want to make sure that they, we've acknowledged this. So proclamation in recognition of Green Light a Vet, whereas green is a color of hope, renewal, and well-being, and whereas green light is a term commonly used to activate forward movement, and whereas the simple action of changing one light to green is intended to spark a national conversation regarding the recognitions of veterans and green light them forward as valued members of our communities. And whereas American veterans are some of our nation's bravest, hardest-working men and women, and whereas it is hard to show our veterans the appreciation they deserve when back home and out of uniform, they are more camouflaged than ever. Let us honor our veterans for an entire month, rather than Veterans Day alone, by changing one light to green in a visible location, on your porch, your home, or at your office, and keep it glowing every day during the month of November as a symbol of appreciation and support for our veterans. Now therefore, I, Rachel B. Medina, Mayor of the City of Cortez, do hereby proclaim November of each year to be the month for the residents of Cortez to unite to green light a vet. Witness my hand this 12th day of November, 2025.
I move that council approve the mayor to issue a proclamation in recognition of Green Light a Vet.
Second.
Motion made by Spruill and seconded by Dobree.
Randall?
Yes.
Dobree?
Yes.
De Haven?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Spruill?
Yes.
Keefe Offer?
Aye.
Medina?
Aye. Thank you. And thank you for your service, all you veterans. All right, we'll move on to number five on our agenda, Public Hearings. 5A is ordinance number 1350, Series 2025. An ordinance amending the Cortez, Colorado Code of Ordinances concerning the Family Recreation Center Sales Tax, presented by Drew Sanders, City Manager.
Yeah, good evening, Mayor and Council. A little bit of history on this, so back in 2001, Cortez voters approved a citywide increase of sales tax at a rate of .55% that was meant to be used to help fund the Cortez Family Recreation Center and as part of the construction, the equipment, operating, and then maintenance of that facility. As that moved forward, and after 2001, in the year 2018, there was an election wherein voters approved a reduction of that sales tax from .55% to .35%, and approved an indefinite extension of the recreation sales tax beyond the payment of the bond that was, at that time, not yet paid off. In fact, that bond was not actually retired until 2022. However, as part of that successful ballot question, it was at that time necessary for the City Council that was seated at that time in 2018 to pass an ordinance to officially lower that sales tax as described and approved by the voters. This never occurred. And as part of the 2026 budget process, this omission was inadvertently discovered by city staff. Actually, it occurred the last week of September 25. Upon a discovery of this issue, we quickly notified the City Council and determined to correct the problem as soon as possible. Therefore, we're coming in to correct that omission and presenting an ordinance to you for consideration at the earliest possible time. Literally, this was in play, and the first reading occurred two weeks after it was discovered. Therefore, this ordinance is designed to take place of the ordinance that was omitted in 2018 that will reduce the recreation sales tax from .55% to .35% and deposit all revenues received into the recreation sales tax to continue maintenance and funding of the recreation center. To date, and what we can say is that we don't know exactly how much that is. Our purpose right now is to come to you and, by extension, the community, quickly declare the omission that occurred and get that corrected. We will and are working on trying to figure out what, how much we actually took in erroneously during that time so that we can accurately declare that. And then next steps are, we need to come to council to try to determine how to best address this in the future. So the one saving grace for this, for us at least, is it was always used for the intended purpose. So yes, a little more was collected, but it was, it remained right in the recreation center fund and has been used for that purpose. In fact, we're spending an awful lot of it this next year trying to improve that facility over there. So even though none of us were in the chair at the time, we found a problem, and it is the position of the city and with the leadership of the City Council that we address our problems, and that's exactly what we're doing here tonight. So with that, I submit it to you, and staff recommends passage, and I am open to any questions that council has.
Just have a couple of questions. So that was passed in April of 2018?
Correct.
And when would that have been implemented in FY19?
It depends on how the ordinance would have been written, but presumably FY19, or maybe, you know, it could have been mid-year 2018, however they wanted to craft it. But just for argument's sake, let's just say fiscal year 19.
And then, you know, people that have come up to me and discussed this, the question that arises is, what do we have in place? What safeguards do we have in place to make sure this doesn't happen again? And I mean, it's easy for us to say, well, those individuals aren't here anymore, but, you know, I think we need to, we need to have a better answer than just that.
Well, you know, we come in, and the presumption would be that these things that occurred before we arrived were already handled, you know, but we did, you know, do our due diligence this year, and just looking through things thoroughly and how they're operating, and then that's how this was found. We do need to revisit our existing tax structure and just make sure that we're charging the right amount. But that, you know, we presume that since this was in place for years, that this had already been done. So are there actual internal controls on that? There's just not. But that doesn't mean that we can't, you know, try to ascertain, are we charging the correct amounts? I agree with that, and that's exactly what happened here and why this was found.
And just one, one comment. I would really like to applaud the individual or staff for identifying this. That was extremely important, so thank you.
I guess I would point out that, excuse me, the vote of the people in 2018 did two things. It lowered the tax rate from .055 to .035, but it also extended the tax indefinitely, whereas it was, at that time, set to sunset upon repayment of the bonds that were used to finance the Rec Center. So the ordinance needs to be changed, and that has been put forth in the existing ordinance that's on your agenda tonight, to both lower the tax rate and implement the extension of the tax beyond the repayment of the bonds. So it's kind of a two-phase change that's required because the current city code contains the tax that was implemented after the 2001 vote.
I guess for your answer, Bill, I think it's on us. It's on the elected body to make sure that we're holding staff accountable, you know, continuing the actions that are expected.
Yeah, I would agree with that, you know. We need to make note of that, and I think where this really should arise is, you know, as we develop that next year's budget, if we make any changes in that sales tax, that, you know, that should be identified at that time, if not sooner. So you're absolutely right.
Well, I think that gets to the heart of it, is that when, whenever a council makes a change and asks the voters for a change, they need to take official action. I would expect our council to take official action if we made a sales tax change and asked the voters to approve a sales tax change. And we are, as soon as we identified, as soon as it was brought to our council's attention, the direction was fix it now, fix it as soon as, as soon as possible. Like, don't wait through the end of the year, don't wait through anything. And our goal is to fix it as soon as possible, and then we'll figure the rest out from there. I think, to me, the important thing is the trust of the community. And to me, as soon as I knew about it, my direction to our city manager was fix it. And that's what we're doing, so thank you.
We can open this, since this is a public hearing, we'll open it up for public comment. Do we have anyone in the audience who'd like to speak about this topic? Okay. Seeing none, we'll close the public comment section. And then we can continue discussion or put a motion up?
You know, I would just say, this comes at a, this comes at a really bad time. But this is the right thing to do, and not only is it the right thing to do, it's the only thing to do. And if there's no other discussion by any council members, I'll make a motion. Is there? With that, Madam Mayor, I move to approve ordinance number 1350, Series 2025, an ordinance amending the City of Cortez Code of Ordinances concerning a reduction of the Family Recreation Center Sales Tax.
Second. Motion made by Lewis and seconded by Randall?
Dobree?
Yes.
Spruill?
Yes.
Randall? Lewis?
Yes.
Offer?
Aye.
De Haven?
Yes.
Medina?
Yes.
Okay, we're going to move on to 5B on our agenda, ordinance number 1351, Series 2025, an ordinance adopting the fiscal year 2026 annual budget for the City of Cortez, presented by Randy Bailey, our Finance Director.
There it is. Good evening, Mayor and Council. In looking at the budget, I just want to reiterate some of the guiding principles behind why we budget things. It provides us that focused time where we can really assess our resources, needs, and opportunities, and then allocate in a prioritized way our resources. I want to take just a second to thank all of our staff. They've, a tremendous amount of effort has gone in to get to, to get to where we are today. And I just want to commend them for all of the effort because obviously we have lots of needs and wants and opportunities and limited resources. So council priorities play a huge role in being able to get to this point, as well as all the effort provided by staff. As we look to the budget, in total, we're running at about $38.4 million, and that breaks out to operating expenditures of $31.2 million and capital expenditures of $7.2. The graph on the right provides a pareto comparing both our 2025 budget against 2026, according to, and broken out by service area. There are some things that I do want to point out in that. If you look at general government, that seems to be a significant uptick. That is going to be the purchase of 801 North Broadway. You also see an anomaly with the airport. In 2025 is the bulk of the budget for that runway project, and so that's why you see that anomaly there on the graph. I would also like to add that there are a couple of key outcomes that are built into this budget. As mentioned, the purchase of the 801 North Broadway building. We also expect to renovate the auditorium over at the recreation center. And then we're going to continue to advance our infrastructure repair and replacement program, as well as continue, I believe, Phase 3 now, of replacing and refreshing some of our key vehicles and equipment across the city. And you can see the departments there, across police, public works, water, and refuse. If we dive into the general fund a little bit, the left graph provides a breakout of our funding sources and a percentage of the total revenue, general fund revenues. The right graph provides a breakout of where those expenditures are going on a by-department basis. In total, revenue is going to increase about 4.5% year-over-year from 2025, and that is net of a reserve of $1.7 million. The general fund has $1.7 million built into this budget, again, for the purchase of North Broadway and to round out the capital plan coming out of the general fund. Expenditures increased 5.5%, and again, that delta between funding sources and revenue and expenses is basically coming out of reserves. We feel it's prudent at this time to continue some of the infrastructure upgrades and replacement of some key assets, and that is why this budget does include some reserves dollars to help fund some of that. Regarding fund balance, we are in a healthy financial position, and I don't believe that using reserves at this time puts the city in any undue risk. And in fact, I think it's pertinent to continue some of the infrastructure rehabilitation efforts that we've put in place over the last couple of years. And with that, I would ask for council's consideration to adopt the 2026 budget.
Love the visuals, thank you.
Sure.
We'll open this up for public comment, for a public hearing. Do we have anyone from the public who would like to comment on our budget? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing portion. Do we have any other comments? Just want to thank staff for all the hard work. I move to approve ordinance number 1351, Series 2025, an ordinance approving the appropriations and budget for fiscal year 2026.
Second.
Motion made by De Haven and seconded by Spruill?
Lewis?
Yes.
De Haven?
Yes.
Randall?
Yes.
Keefe Offer?
Aye.
Dobree?
Yes.
Spruill?
Yes.
Medina?
Yes. Thank you, Randy. All right, we're going to move on to six on our agenda, unfinished business. We have none, so seven is new business. 7A is appointments to the Library Advisory Board, the Gulf Advisory Committee, and the Parks and Recreation Forestry Advisory Board. Council will make, consider making one appointment to each of these boards. We had our interviews during the workshop today. Presented by Daniel, Daniel Wells, City Clerk.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Yes, you guys interviewed the three applicants that received for the board member positions that have been opened. Most of the positions that have been opened, there were overall nine, nine regular positions opened over the eight boards that we have, and four youth positions. So overall, we only received three applications for all of those boards that were open. Specifically, the openings, there was three openings on the Library Advisory Board due to the terms ending of those three members. There was one opening on the Gulf Advisory Committee, and that was due to Mr. Sam Jarvis's term ending, which he reapplied for. And the one opening on the Parks and Recreation Forestry Advisory Board was due to member George Tripp's term ending. And then Ms. Sheek, she was also on the board previously, and her term ended, so this is her reappointment application as well. Staff recommends that all three applicants be appointed to serve on the boards they applied for. If council chooses to not appoint them, we can continue to advertise for these positions. The positions that were not applied for and that are still open are continued to be advertised as well. But if we, if you guys choose to appoint these three, these three will be taken off the advertising on, online.
What other boards do we have that we need filled?
There are two more seats on the library, two on the Board of Adjustment and Appeals, and two on the Public Arts Advisory Board.
Do you know on the library board, who else's terms are up? I know sometimes on boards, we allow people who don't live in city limits, but that's like a limited seat, and I'm just curious.
Yes, it was Carolyn Goff and Holly Tatnall that their terms expired, and I can look really quickly.
I don't think one of those people lives in the...
Correct. One person lives outside of the city limits, so there is a county, like, if someone lived in the county, they would be eligible to serve on this board that wanted to apply, yeah.
I'm bummed our turnout for applicants was pretty low.
Going into the applicants, I think all three of them are very good. I do want to do a little bit for Sam Jarvis. One of the reasons I asked him why he wanted to do it again is because he mentioned that he may not be doing it again, and I chastised him because I'll tell you, that man is one of the best organizers and runner of a board I have ever seen. He is fantastic. It's to the point, let's do business, and he's great. And I would recommend Sam for that position, and in fact, I encouraged him to do it. I guess without further comment, I move that Karen Sheek be appointed to the Library Advisory Board for a two-year term, Sam Jarvis be appointed to the Gulf Advisory Committee for a three-year term, and Eric Hendrickson be appointed to the Parks, Recreation, and Forestry Advisory Board for a two-year term.
Second.
Motion made by Spruill and seconded by... Motion made by Spruul and seconded by Lewis?
Dehaven?
Yes.
Dobree?
Yes.
Keith Boffer?
Aye.
Randall?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Spruul?
Yes.
Medina?
Yes. All right, we're gonna move on to seven B on our agenda, ordinance number thirteen forty-nine, an adoption of several revisions to the Cortez land use code, presented by Nancy Dazdahl, our contract city planner. Thanks for being here, Nancy.
Thanks for having me. It's great to be back. So what we have here tonight is just the first reading of the ordinance. I think you're all familiar with it. We, I realize it's a bit out of date. It says that the new code's been in, adopted for three months, but it's been quite a bit over that. I brought the visual, which was all the notes and changes as the staff uses the code and finds some inconsistencies and just things that maybe got missed and need to be revised. So we've been working on it for, for quite some time now, had work sessions with the code committee, with public. Planning commission has recommended this forward, and we've got the ordinance here for you tonight. What we're asking, of course, is to set the public hearing for November twenty-fifth, which is when you would take public comment, although we don't see a lot of it here tonight. And I guess with that, I don't think I'm gonna go over all those changes here tonight since there won't be public, but if you had any questions on any of them, I'd be happy to talk through that.
Nancy, I have no questions, just comment, and that is, I appreciate all the documentation that you provided. It was very thorough to go through that, and I applaud everyone on there because, you know, this is a, a working document. As you go through it and use it, you find out what's not working or what mistakes are there. So I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
I just wanted to ask the community to please review this and, and please comment. Please send, send emails. We've had a, a few ordinances this meeting where we haven't had any public comment or heard anything, and we, we did really go out of our way for over a year to, to work on the land use code and get as much possible feedback from the community as we could, and I, I really would like to hear any feedback on any of these comments, any of these changes and comments that people may have on them. Thank you.
I have a, I have a question, and I have a comment. So my first question has to do with, I'm not sure if it's a question or it's a comment, but I'm just gonna go ahead and put it out there. But the, on three point oh six point three point B point two point lower capital, lowercase a, point lowercase i, it's included a provision that the single family dwelling or the ADU must be occupied by the property owner at the time of the application for the ADU permit. This was added at the suggestions of the attorney due to the difficulty of enforcing occupation of the dwellings. Can you run that by me again, kind of what happened on that one and why that's in place?
Sure. So when the code was reviewed, what was it, two, revised about two years ago to try and get more people to make ADUs more available to more properties? The city had had an ADU provision for several years, and no one had ever used it. The intent was to try and remove some of the barriers to what, to ADUs. At that time, there was a very vigorous public process. We were out in front of, we were at First Fridays or Thursday, what it, I forget, Thursdays, yeah, and talked to hundreds of people about it, got a lot of feedback, took it through a long process. Part of that process had a provision in that code that said either the ADU or the dwelling had to be occupied by the homeowner. And that was to address some folks' concerns that if you had two rentals in a single-family neighborhood, it wouldn't have the same character as other homes in the single-family neighborhood. So, but that if one of them were occupied by the homeowner, they would police any renters more, and it would be more in fitting with the neighborhood. So that provision was in there. When the state came out with some revisions to their, to ADUs suggested revisions to communities, they had removed, they, they suggested you don't have a provision of requiring occupancy. We kind of talked around it a little bit and then realized that, yeah, we have this provision, but how in the world would you ever enforce it? We're not gonna go, are you still there? But it's easy to enforce when they come in for their first permit. So it's a great suggestion, and we recommend it, including that into these provisions.
Well, thanks for that explanation, and I hear where you're coming from, but it sounds like we kind of went against what the state was recommending on that one. And I can see that it is a little bit prejudicial in that we're assuming that because owner or a, that an owner is not on a property, that it's going to go downhill. And I think that's a pretty broad, I mean, I can see where it could happen, but it could also happen the other way. So I just have a problem with that one issue in that it, in my opinion, as I've said earlier, it, it has to do with private property rights, and I, and I'm not in agreement with that one. So I'm, I'm, and, and I hear what you're saying, and, and I'm, I'm the only one that seems to have this opinion, but I do have that opinion. And then my second one had to do with under chapter five, and we, and we brought this up earlier, but just for the record, chapter five, table five point six on the sign measurements for clarification that the maximum amount of window that can be covered with signs to state fifty percent per window or below. And I brought that up previously, and I think the, the only feedback we got was that possibly law enforcement could be concerned with a sign, signs covering greater than fifty percent of a commercial window, which is, I think is kind of ridiculous, because there are walls that cover a hundred percent of the side of a building, and you can't see what's in behind the other side of the wall. So I think this is another issue of us overstepping our boundaries, and who's gonna enforce and go about measuring if fifty percent of a window is covered. I just have objections with those two. I just wanna put them out there because I do have objections with them. And I, I appreciate the work that you guys have put into them, but thank you.
I wanted, I want to agree with her on the fifty percent window thing. I, in fact, I just happened to walk down Main Street after we talked about it last time, and I'll bet you that there is sixty percent of every building in town has more than fifty percent of their windows covered. And I, I encourage everybody to go take a look, because I, I pointed it out to the city manager as we were going into Blondie's, look next door, and the windows were totally covered. Go by the Chamber of Commerce, totally covered, and so I, I, I'm in agreement.
And as a reminder, council, this is first reading, so I would encourage you to reiterate your concerns during the public hearing at the next reading, 'cause it, your decision is supposed to be made on evidence and testimony presented at the public hearing. So you can type it up and send it in, and it will count as a comment, but comments made on first reading generally are not part of the record for the decision. Madam mayor, I move to approve on first reading ordinance number thirteen forty-nine, series twenty twenty-five, an ordinance approving revisions to the Colorado, excuse me, to the Cortez land use code as set forth in the ordinance, and set the ordinance for a second reading and public hearing on November twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five.
Second.
Motion made by Lewis and seconded by Dobree?
Spruul?
Yes.
Keith Boffer?
Aye.
Dehaven?
Yes.
Dobree?
Yes.
Randall?
No.
Lewis?
Yes.
Medina?
Yes. All right, we're gonna move on to seven C on our agenda, ordinance number thirteen fifty-two, series twenty twenty-five, an ordinance to amend the land use code to comply with proposition one twenty-three, the fast track requirements, presented by Nancy Dazdahl, our contract city planner.
This is another request to amend the land use code. There is a reason why we separated it out and didn't pull it into the overall code provisions, and that is, this one is due to a new statute, state statute that requires communities that have opted in to proposition one two three, like Cortez, to adopt a fast track, fast track, they call it, process for affordable housing, new housing, affordable housing developments by the end of twenty twenty-six. The state is also offering monetary incentive for communities that do this by the end of twenty twenty-five, which would be a fifty thousand dollar grant, no, no match, that you can use for projects that advance affordable housing in the community. So we thought it would be a good idea to separate it out in case there's issues with any of the other code amendments, and you'd be able to adopt this one a little faster and perhaps be eligible for that grant. The idea here is that the, I don't make sure I got this pulled up, we would add a whole new section to the, the code entitled incentives and include not only fast track for processing as required by the state, but put in with that the incentive that the, the city already has for density bonus for affordable projects. And then, one more that we want you to discuss a little bit is that we, that also there would bump up the minor site plan, which right now is set at four units. Staff can review, a four-plex, but anything bigger than that goes on to the planning commission. This incentive we talked about was bumping that up perhaps as high as sixteen units that staffer could review, affordable projects only, and anything over that would go to the planning commission. The planning commission looked at this last month. They did balk a little bit at that bumping up and have recommended to you that you keep it at the four units. In other words, they removed that incentive from their recommendation. Just wanted to bring it back up because it is a strong incentive for the small developer affordable housing projects. So essentially, that is how this would work. There's a lot of provisions in here. We'll go over them in detail on November twenty-fifth. I just wanna tell you that Dola was very, very impressed with this approach. We submitted it to them to see if they would, they have a process where they can tell you whether or not it'll comply with statute. They were very happy with it. In fact, they asked staff to go on a peer review panel and talk to everyone in the state about how Cortez was approaching this. So you're doing great. Good work. The state's really proud of how you're going over and above to incentivize affordable housing in Cortez.
I am very pleased with what we're doing as far as affordable housing is. I think every member on the council is very supportive of it. I do have a concern about bumping it up to sixteen units without any review of council or any opportunity for public input. Last week, we, or last meeting, we had a, we, we heard about a, what was it, carport, right? And we gave the community opportunity to give us input on a carport. And it's, there's a lot, there's a huge space between community participating and commenting on a carport, and then us being, have the ability to pass a sixteen-unit thing on an administrative level and not having it come before council. So I am in opposition to that very strongly. The second point I would have is a question for you regarding the state's approval and acceptance and happiness with our maneuvers that we've been doing. Has it been with just this, with just this piece that we're operating now, or just in, in general overview?
Well, this is the piece that we submitted to them, talked over with them, and they were impressed with, so, yes. Most community, you know, the minimum that you have to do for this fast track is adopt a process, and say you will review an affordable housing project with more than fifty percent of the units being affordable within ninety days of submittal. That's really all you have to do. The city really does that already. In fact, I looked at the last one, which was Southwest Community Housing Solutions for the Southwest, that little four-plex. You didn't see it because it was four units or less, and it stopped at the planning commission under the old code. New code changes that a little bit more. But fifty-three days from submittal, it was approved by the planning commission. So you're probably already meaning it, but the state does require that you guarantee it in your code. That's all they asked for. And then this provisions had that in there, but it also had the density bonus in there, which was already in the code. We just pulled it into this incentives where it's clear. Some of the other things that you don't have to do but are in this draft, maybe for now, it might come out, would be the additional admin review. The other thing in here is the state requires that if it, fifty percent or more of the development is affordable, that it's, would be eligible for fast track. The recommendation in here is set at ten percent, so that a project that is ninety percent market rate, but they're providing ten percent of the units as affordable, it would be eligible for the fast track. Okay? That's it. It doesn't mean you have to approve it, but it's eligible to go through faster. I believe that's all the major provisions in here, but we can go over those more in detail. Next week, or on the twenty-fifth, or if you wanna do it now, we're, I'm happy, I'm here.
Can you comment on how this would affect you if we didn't go with the sixteen units? Is it going to rock your world if we go back down to the four units or however our minimum is on this?
No, I don't, I, I think that's fine. I, I would just say that, you know, sometimes it's easier on you if you don't open up an affordable project to ask all the neighbors to come in. If it meets with a site plan, if it meets the density, if it meets the setbacks, if it meets the landscaping, there's clear provisions in the code, it's, it's gonna be recommended for approval, and you're likely gonna have to approve something like that. And since there's clear provisions in the code for those things, I sometimes feel like it's not fair to say, hey, neighbors, come on in and tell us all. What you feel about this, they often are opposed to affordable projects in their neighborhood, but you're gonna be asked to approve it, so, recommended to approve it. So sometimes I feel like it's a little disingenuous to say it's open for public hearing, it's gonna be in front of your elected officials, but the reality is you're probably gonna have to approve it if it meets all those requirements. And that's why I feel like it's okay to pull that down to a staff level. You know, staff's gonna be, it checks, it checks all the boxes, we should approve this.
Counter with you on that one, though. Wouldn't it be disingenuous for us to let people come and talk about a, a carport and to give their public input on that? I mean, we're still asking. mean, we're still asking for this.
I, I agree that the carport conditional use permit requirement's a bit over the top. There was quite a bit of discussion on that with the code committee, and that's the way it had been for years, and it got left that way.
Well, I don't have a lot of issues with, with this. It is kind of, in some ways, codifying what we're doing for the most part already. The one thing I do wanna raise again is that I, this does give me the concern of the state chipping away at home rule and, and trying to, trying to use legislation like this and incentives like this to tell home rule municipalities what to do regarding zoning, which is what, a decision that we should be making, not the front range should be making. So that, that is my one concern there. I, I don't, I don't think I have the same concern. I think sixteen may be a little bit high, but I don't have the same concern there. Our, our code is, if it meets the code, we, we have to approve it. So I, I don't have, I don't have a lot of concern there. I, I think anything that, anything that would require a conditional use would come to us anyway. So that, that I think is, is a protection to the community. I think I probably might be a little more comfortable if we brought that down a little bit, maybe to eight. But somewhere, somewhere, sixteen does seem a little bit high. That is a large, that is a large development. It is, it is a large development in someone's community. And I do think even if, even if it meets our code and we have to approve it, it is still a valuable, it is still a valuable exercise to hear from the community and hear about specific issues. It may, there may be something that the developer doesn't realize, and that is a small change that they could make based on community, community input that they wouldn't receive otherwise. So I, I do think that, I do think that hearing from the community there is valuable. Yeah, that, that's my feeling, feeling on it.
Nancy, where did the sixteen number come from?
It wasn't, there, there's not a lot of research behind that, so.
I agree with Councilmember Dobry. I don't have many concerns about this, but I'm also fine. Like sixteen does seem like a big number, dropping that to more like eight or ten.
And just to clarify, even if, if staff approved it, there would be an ability for it to be appealed up to the planning commission in this, this case. If a, if it, staff denied it, and a developer was upset with that, or if staff approved it and a neighbor was upset, it could be appealed.
I guess, well, I see that it's definitely important to solidify those numbers. I guess I have to ask the question and just think about, you know, being in that environment right now, when was the last time we had someone want eight units or sixteen units? It just, is not something that comes up necessarily very often in my experience over many years. And again, I'll go back to what I just said. It is important to solidify, because things might change, and, and that might be a, a common occurrence. But I guess, yeah, eight would be a little more comfortable than sixteen.
Do we revise that even before the twenty-fifth, if you wish, or delete it entirely?
Do you have a current number that sort of fits in there? Do, do, I heard four at some point. What was the four in reference to?
Four's already in your code. So four is already allowed to go through an administrative approval.
Is there any downside in sticking with four?
No, it's just not an additional incentive, so, that's fine.
I, I have to agree with Councilman Dobry on maybe looking at reducing that number. I'm, I'm in favor of increasing it, and I think a, a good compromise would be to put that at eight. And I, I would say if we could have her change that before the twenty-fifth, that would expedite things. So that, if all council members are in agreement with that, I think that's something we should do. And, and I also agree with Councilmember Randall. And it, it does seem kinda crazy that we, you know, have public comment on a carport, yet, you know, we wouldn't have public comment on, on something like this. But I, I would be comfortable with eight.
Do we need to make that part of a motion, or, okay?
No, because there's no public comment, you're not making any decisions tonight, but I hear you clearly and can revise that.
And I just wanna clarify, like, I know it seems silly to have the carport come here, but it didn't meet all the requirements. It was outside of what we do, and that's why it comes.
Right. The way the, the current code and the previous code were written is, you can't do a carport that's within the setback, but you could apply for a conditional use permit to do one that way, and, yeah.
Okay. Ready to set the public hearing?
I move to approve on first reading ordinance thirteen fifty-two, series twenty twenty-five, an ordinance revising the land use code to add incentives for affordable housing projects and set the ordinance for a second reading and public hearing on November twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five.
Second.
Motion made by Dehaven and seconded by Louis.
Keefhoffer.
Aye.
Spruul.
Yes.
Dobry.
Yes.
Louis.
Yes.
Haven.
Yes.
Randall.
Yes.
Medina.
Yes. Thank you, Nancy. All right, we're moving on to seven D on our agenda, request for elected official signature for the LPC supplemental grant funds. This is a letter to Dola requesting supplementary grant funds of ninety-six hundred dollars that will support the purchase of an AI platform. It'll assist in affordable housing developments and propos, proposition one twenty-three goals, presented by Jason Armstrong, our interim director of community and economic development.
Good evening, council, mayor. Yeah, so I bring before you guys a letter. Dola has offered this very recently to communities that are interested in utilizing artificial intelligence in their planning processes. They're offering a supplemental grant to our existing local planning capacity grant. The letter as presented, we sent that to Dola to make sure that it met all of their requirements for the submittal, and they approved it. A little bit of background, as you guys know, the local planning capacity grant was procured in twenty twenty-four, and that is, been paying for our housing coordinator position. That's been helping us with affordable housing and implementing the city's housing action plan. We also piloted an AI program that was no cost to the city in this last year with a Colorado provider. And from the planning staff capacity side of things, we definitely found it to be extremely helpful in helping us do research. It certainly will never take the place of the human that is actually using the AI platform, so that is not the goal here. I'm saying that for the benefit of council and the community. But it definitely speeds up our time in doing research into the code, getting answers back to the community. I feel like it's a good customer service tool as well. So I guess the other thing I'll say is that in the pilot project, we did not use the full capacity of that AI platform because we didn't upload all of our data into it. And so, the intention here is to fully utilize an AI platform. We've not chosen that provider yet. This project was already in place for next calendar year, and it was budgeted. This grant basically just supplements that project, which is, it's good. The only other thing I will say, and then open up for questions, is that I think that overall, the state is seeing the benefits of using these platforms. And so one of the conditions of receiving this is that the city will be participating as part of a learning collaborative statewide with other communities that are test, doing test cases, test uses of their own. And so it's gonna greatly expand our understanding locally on how to use this, through that interactive process. So if council is in favor of signing this letter, having the mayor sign the letter, and us submitting it to Dola, the possible motion is located on the staff memo. That'll open up for questions.
The only question I had is, is this, i- is this to, to apply for the grant, or is this, if we approve it, we, we receive the funds?
Yeah, it's, it's a new process for Dola. This would be a supplemental request to our existing local planning capacity grant. So there's not a new grant application going in. They're asking communities to submit this letter. So once it goes in there, it's reviewed by a committee at the state level. So there isn't a guarantee that they'll even accept it into the program, but they have a limited amount of funds, and they're, if you're at all interested in it. And I guess the other thing I did not mention is that this sort of technology is also gonna be a great benefit as we try to achieve our fast track goals for affordable housing that Nancy just mentioned.
And, and you mentioned that if, if awarded, we would be part of a pilot project. And how many communities, what's, what's the maximum they're going to offer? Do you know?
They, no, right now, I think on the website, the last time I looked, they have five participating communities. Unsurprisingly, they're all in the front range. So I think they're seeking some more rural communities to participate, yeah.
So from what I'm understanding, this will be up and running at the beginning of the year of twenty-five, is that correct?
Well, you know, regardless of whether or not we get this supplemental, we're gonna push forward with finding a provider, but we're gonna have to go through the procurement process. So right now, what we estimate is that if funded, that award won't come to us until, I think Dola said, probably January, February. So at that point, we'd start going through the procurement process for a contractor. Without it, that might speed that up a little bit, because we're not waiting on Dola, we're just gonna start going through our P process. So first quarter of next year would be a safe bet.
So this is really, I, I would think would be a hard thing to project, but based on our previous last year, last two or three years, how much staff time do you think is going to be saved with the implementation of this project?
I mean, I've read a lot of different white papers on this from the planning community. My best estimate is that, and it could be, it could be process specific, but I think Dola's anticipated goal is to see it reduce times by fifty to seventy percent for development review applications.
So do you expect a reduction in, in staff in order to, to justify, I mean, what are we talking here? We're gonna keep all the staff, and are we gonna also have a fifty to seventy-five percent reduction in, in man-hours?
Well, currently, we have one city planner. We also have a contract planner. So I hate to say it to Nancy, but it may reduce the time that we need to lean on our contract planner.
Yeah, I don't think that we, that you guys would lack work. I think it just, like, open you up for the ability to long-term plan and, and address a lot of the, the long-ticket items that we've made a priority that you guys just haven't had time to get to.
Yeah, there's, there's plenty of work to be done. I think the other thing that's kind of intriguing about the way we're making this proposal is, we would like to actually invite a few developers and realtors that we've had interactions with to see if they want to take a look at it and try to use it, and get their feedback as well, because I think the long-term goal would be potentially to have this be more of a public interface and be usable for the broader community. It would just help with complete applications coming to us, people knowing what questions to ask us. Might just cut down on some frustration from the community in trying to access our land use code.
I move that council authorize the mayor to sign a letter to the Department of Local Affairs requesting supplementary grant funds of nine thousand six hundred dollars that will support purchase of an artificial intelligence AI platform.
Second.
Motion made by Louis and seconded by Keefhoffer.
Randall.
Yes.
Dehaven.
Yes.
Keefhoffer.
Aye.
Dobry.
Yes.
Louis.
Yes.
Spruul.
Yes.
Medina.
Yes. All right, we're moving on to seven E on our agenda, possible cancellation of the December twenty-third, twenty twenty-five council meeting, presented by Daniel Wells, our city clerk.
Good evening, mayor and council. Due to the holidays, the staff is presenting an option to cancel the meeting on December twenty-third, twenty twenty-five. Historically, this has been done by council previously in the past, just to help with everyone scheduling around the holidays. So with that, I leave it to your motion.
Yeah, we, we historically do cancel the, the second meeting, especially because it is two days before Christmas this year. I, I move that council approve the cancellation of the council meeting scheduled for December twenty-third, twenty twenty-five due to the holidays.
Second.
Motion made by Dobry and seconded by Spruul.
Dehaven.
Yes.
Louis.
Yes.
Randall. Spruul.
Yes.
Keefhoffer.
Aye.
Dobry.
Yes.
Medina.
Yes. Okay, we're done with, whatever setting is new business. So we're moving on to eight, draft resolutions and ordinances. We have none. So number nine on our agenda, city attorney report.
No report, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Number eleven on our, or ten on our agenda, city manager report.
Yes, mayor and council, I've only got one item this evening, and it involves the library director recruitment. So I've been corresponding over the last week with Drew Gorgay from Columbia Limited, and we have a pending meeting, if we can ever get our schedules to line up here soon, to start honing this down. But I did wanna share with council, his last correspondence with me, that said that we ended up with thirty-two applicants, ten from Colorado and twenty-two from thirteen other states. In states, applicant, in-state applicants are thirty-one percent of the pool, and sixty-eight percent are from out-of-state. There were also three applicants in common to the last recruitment. Then he just notes in here that this appears, and this is quoting him, "This appears to be the largest, most qualified pool I've assembled from among the four library director recruitments I've done in Colorado." That is good news for us, so I'm very pleased to hear that. I hope that plays out for us. But just to remind everyone that the preliminary interviews that will take place with Columbia Limited on November eighteenth and nineteenth, and then we will be having the finalist interviews here in Cortez on December tenth and eleventh. So pending any questions, that concludes my report.
Thank you. All right, moving on to number eleven on our agenda, city council committee reports, eleven A is the mayor's report on the workshop. And during our workshop, we interviewed our three applicants, one for the library board, one for Parks and Rec, and one for golf advisory, and we appointed them to the board during this meeting. And then we had a general council discussion, and Councilmember Randall brought up the, in broadening the use of lodgers tax and looking into that in, as we update our charter and our code of ordinances. All right, we'll move on to other board reports. Eleven B is other board reports, and we'll start with Councilmember Louis.
On November seventh, we had the golf advisory committee. Councilmember Randall was also present, and if I leave anything out, please join in and add to it. October was the only month that golfers and, and revenue was down, and that is because of the heavy rain that we had. For October FY twenty-four, we had about twenty-four thousand and For October FY twenty-four, we had about twenty-four thousand in revenue. And for FY twenty-five, we had twenty-one thousand three hundred and seventy-seven. Where we stand year-to-date compared to FY twenty-four, in twenty-four, we had twenty-three thousand three hundred and eighty-seven rounds and had a revenue of five hundred and sixty-seven, one ninety-nine. And in FY twenty-five, we had twenty-five thousand two hundred and seventy-one rounds with a revenue of six hundred and twenty-two thousand nine hundred and sixty-six. November sixteenth is the last day for golf. That's a Sunday. The water has already been turned off, so things are getting very dry out there. We did spend a lot of time and, and discussed fees. And the proposal that will probably come to council is a ten percent increase on pass holders, a fifty-dollar increase on private cart usage from seven fifty to eight hundred. And, um, we're going to begin that fee process for the following year, starting on January sixteenth. We're going to have a meeting and, and go in-depth and talk about those fees. So that's my report. Council member Randolph, if there's anything you'd like to add?
No, I just think it was a very fruitful discussion for the participants in that there, it was recognized that there's got to be better cost recoup across the board for all of parks and recs and how best to do it. I think that Mr. Wright is doing a fine job of a logical approach. And there was some possible fee increases that were found that were, that came from the golf community that didn't come from outside. So I think, I think the golf community recognizes what's happening and what's required of it. And it's going to be a bit of a bite, but I think everyone's on board to making it happen.
All right, um, I went to the art committee, arts advisory board meeting last week, and they will actually be doing a presentation to council on December ninth, so.
I attended the November fourth Tuesday meeting of the Historic Preservation Board. Again, planning for the two fifty, one fifty celebration is in full force right now. A multitude of other milestones are, also may be incorporated with that. I, I think it's really important, one thing that I think is very important is that the Historic Preservation Board be recognized because they were nominated, the whole board was nominated for the People's Choice Award for the Stephen H. Hart Award. Even though the Cortez Historic Preservation Board did not receive that award, it, they, it was a great honor that they were recommended. They've, uh, they're also in the process of reviewing changes to chapter seven in the land use code. And they have been working on, Helen has worked really hard on the application for historic designation. Uh, and we're going to see more from planning and zoning as those changes come through, so.
Madam Mayor, the Parks, Recreation, Forests Advisory Board met on Thursday, November sixth, and we talked, we had actually a few little celebrations. One is that the teen night has been a success, something new at the rec center. The middle school had one on October eleventh, and there were a lot of students there. Fewer high school kids because they were too cool. There has been great progress on the Parks and Rec master plans, so we're really looking forward to seeing what comes out of that here pretty soon. We reviewed the same budget presentation that we saw as council for twenty twenty-six budget, and then also reviewed some of the things that were accomplished in twenty twenty-five. Talked a little bit about the city charter and code review. And a really cool thing, there's been a program survey that's implemented, and it's going really well. We're getting a lot of really great responses, and those are three different surveys. One about parks, one about the rec center, and one about aquatics. So it was a very positive and productive meeting.
Great. Thank you all. Uh, we'll move on to number twelve on our agenda, public participation. Do we have anyone from the, the public who would like to comment? You get three minutes per person and may only speak once. All right, seeing none, then we'll move on to number thirteen on our, on our agenda, other items of business, executive session.
I move that city council go into executive session pursuant to CRS section twenty-four dash six dash four oh two four E for the purpose of determining positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations, developing strategy for negotiations, and/or instructing negotiators concerning, one, the city's efforts to select a developer builder and develop and build housing on the land located on West Seventh Street, and, two, the city's efforts to purchase and remodel the office building known as the Empire Electric Building located at eight oh one North Broadway.
Second.
Motion made by Dobree and seconded by Lewis.
Spruul.
Yes.
Dee Haven.
Yes.
Randall.
Yes.
Keith Hoffer.
Aye.
Dobree.
Yes.
Lewis.
Yes.
Medina.
Yes. All right, uh, thank you for those audience for being here tonight. You're welcome to wait out.